As the premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here is tonight's meeting agenda. Stay tuned. The Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
Call this James City County Board of Supervisors regular meeting to order. Good afternoon. Mr. Stevens, if you would please call the roll.
Yes ma'am. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Mr. Eisenhower?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower represents the Jamestown District and his vice chair to the board. Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Ms. Sadler represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District. His chair of the board, sitting to my left is Adam Kinsman, county attorney, and I'm Scott Stevens, county administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the board.
Thank you very much. We will have a moment of silence led by our pledge of, excuse me, followed by our pledge of allegiance, and tonight's pledge will be led by Den 8 Arrow of Light Cub Scouts with PAC 103, and they are led by Jeff Parker. PAC 103 is the oldest and largest Cub Scout PAC in the Williamsburg area. These scouts are in fifth grade and are working on their Building a Better World badge which involves studying government and the role of citizens. And there's quite a number of you this evening, so thank you for coming out. We appreciate it. So do you all know what to do? Okay. Great! To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great job. We have some pins and certificates for you all. Michael, you want to come and help me?
Go ahead and, we're gonna do the photo op?
Sure, yes, we will do a photo op. Thank you. That brings us to public comment. First, Jay Everson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board. I'm Jay Everson, 103 Branscombe Boulevard, in Ms. Larson's district. I came here tonight to speak in reference to the surplus of the schools. As you know, that this is $2.7 million in total. It's actually about $300,000 because they had $300,000 in decreased revenue from the state, the federal government, and other local sources. Every year, we get a surplus. And I used to wonder, why do we have a surplus every year? They never have a deficit, they always have a surplus. And it came to my attention back in the CIP discussion at the Policy Committee meeting last spring, when they were discussing the schools. The representative from the school central office, I should say, indicated that we use most likely for new construction. Thank God, that's been changed. Thank you, Mr. Eisenhower. Two, they were using low enrollment for year-to-year budgeting, but they were using most likely numbers for personnel. And every year, they hire about 100 teachers, but if you come a little short, let's say 80, like they had a couple of years ago, the difference there is about one and a half million dollars. Because each teacher, total compensation is about $75,000, give or take. If it's an experienced teacher, it might be a little bit more, but if you're new teachers coming in, it's about $75,000. So it occurred to me that we probably ought to be getting all our numbers on low enrollment projections, not just, not just the operating cost, because that's where a lot of your surplus shows up. Second thing is, on the list that you're being asked to approve, only two of those items are on existing CIPs. Only two. And you gotta wonder, why didn't they take CIP projects that are already there? Now, every year, when they approve their budget, at some point, usually the chair, but some other times other folks, there'll, there'll be a statement made that this is a budget of need. Need, as according to state statute. But at the end of the year, when we have a surplus, it becomes, it becomes a budget of want. These are things that they want. Only two of them, the wailing entrance and the well removal, have been on existing CIPs already. All the rest of it has been added on in addition to that. Now also, they are allowed to keep up to $500,000 in CIP money that is not expended. So let's say that James Blair was 30 million, they spent 2.95 million, or 2. whatever it is, half a million they can keep. Anything over that is supposed to come back to the city and to the county according to the contract, existing contract. But there has been no accountability, or accounting, I should say, of their CIP expenditures. In other words, how much did they actually spend on James Blair? How much did they actually spend on these entrances, or on this, or that? They come back and tell you so that you know that the money that's left over should be coming back to the taxpayers. Because this total, this total here is two cents, two cents on the real estate tax. And it doesn't sound like a lot, but it's $2.7 million of taxpayers' money. So going forward, I would like to see if there's any possibility that we could have universal budgeting on the same criteria. Low enrollment for everything. Personnel, year-to-year, and for new construction. Thank you very much.
Peg Borman?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman, and Mr. Pierce. I'm happy to be here this afternoon. I'm Peg Borman. I live at 17 Settlers Lane, and you know it, I'm here to talk trash. But after doing the litter survey back in mid-October, I'm happy to report that it's not as bad as it has been in the past, and I think we're making a lot of improvements. Just giving you a check of the numbers. In 2016, when we did the first one, we had 1.66% of litter throughout the county. That's based on the national average, but anyway, don't ask me what all the rest of it is. 1.58 in 2017, and this year it was 1.37. That's a lot of decrease, thank goodness. And it was done by watershed, not by precincts. But the, I'm happy to say, Ms. Sadler, we're doing much better up there. The Stonehouse and Powhatan kinda overlapped, and on the Ware Creek watershed, it was from 2.10 in 16, it went down to 1.22. And we didn't find near as many of those illegal dumps that we have been finding. Dyasken watershed, Dyasken Creek watershed, which is Powhatan and Stonehouse combined that we did, went from 1.54 to 1.44. Powhatan and Berkeley overlapped on the Gordon Creek, went from 1.52 to 1.23. That's a pretty good decrease also. And then Berkeley-Jamestown, which was the Powhatan watershed, went from 1.66 to 1.53. And the Roberts-Jamestown went, which was under the Skifts Creek, was 1.66 to 1.37. I think that's a pretty good indication that we're doing something right. And of course, I was so happy to see the Stonehouse, because they always give me a hard time, when Stonehouse is worse than the rest of them. And I say, well, it's because those people are just not listening to me. But, but anyway, I'm real happy to think that we're doing a much better job in the county of keeping it cleaned up. And last Saturday, we held the 5th Annual Litter and Recycling Expo. We had Goodwill truck there, we had a Restore truck, we had HR Green trailer. We also had Coastal Virginia Air Mineal Environmental Company there that did latex paint recycling, and that was quite a phenomenal, and it brought a lot of people out for that. And I want to thank all of you that, members of the, that were there, the ones that let us know you weren't going to be there, and we really missed those of you that didn't make it there. I think that you missed a great event. I'm a little bit biased, but it was an opportunity for people to connect, and learn, and find out things about what's happening in our litter and recycling world. And it was also a great opportunity for people to just come out and kinda socialize, because we had about 125 people that showed up. So considering that the first year, we had 150 people, and they were the people that were vendors and whatever, that was just socializing amongst themselves, to 25 last year, which was the 4th annual, I think we've really come a long way. So I want to thank all of you on the board, the staff, and everybody that's been helping us, and especially the citizens out there. And those that are trashing our county and illegal dumping, I got my eyes on you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to presentations. Our first one will be Colonial Soil and somebody, Water Conservation District presentation. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, board members. Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman, Mr. Pierce. I'm Bob Lund, one of the two directors elected from James City County to represent us on the Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District Board. With me in the audience is Ed Overton, well, he was over there, he was probably somewhere else, who is the other elected director from James City County, and Jim Wallace, our district manager. We're here to provide a brief report about district efforts in James City County. Our annual report for fiscal year 2018 should be in your package and is also available on our website for any in the public or the audience who might be interested. I welcome your questions at any point, and we'll see. Oh, I can look it. Okay. The district is a regional effort, including James City County. Districts were one of the responses to the Dust Bowl ecologic and social catastrophe of the 1930s. Their purpose is support of voluntary conservation efforts. Traditionally viewed as organizations focused on agriculture conservation, less well-known is the Colonial District's urban and suburban role with homeowner associations, churches, schools, homeowners, and other landowners. The Colonial District covers 825 square miles, is home to about 175,000 people, and currently employs four staff members. Supplemental funding from local governments and grants is what allows the Colonial District to do more than the minimum of implementing the Virginia-funded agricultural cost share The map on the top right illustrates agriculture in James City County, with mainland farms in the center, a horse paddock to the left, and suburban development around both. James City has about 3,150 acres of cropland. The Virginia Conservation, I'm sorry, the Virginia Agricultural Cost Share Program helps to free the cost of conservation practices on farmland in James City. Historically, most Colonial District funding has come via this program. The most common supported practices under this program are to cover the ground with growing plants over the winter. This protects the land from erosion, reduces nutrient runoff into our watersheds, thus both protecting our farmland for future generations and our waterways for fishing and swimming. The resulting reduction in nutrient fuel, if you will, to our waterways in turn diminishes the incidence of algae bloom, which can cause fish kills and can be toxic. In our area, conservation planning to address Bay Act issues is an example of necessary technical support no longer funded by the state, nor is the necessary training and other preparation for this planning. The district is making good progress on the horse census mentioned above, and more about this later in the presentation. While the programs cited on this slide were our major educational thrusts, the district also facilitated access to lower-cost camp experiences via forestry camp and youth conservation camp, provided technical support for school and community gardens, and in-classroom conservation education such as advising the Stonehouse Farm Club and Rob Till's Community Garden in Grove. The Colonial District provides a valuable conservation education resource with unique knowledge and tailored programs which complements other sources of technical advice and education. Since 2017, interest in the Virginia Conservation Assistance Program generated 15 more district site visits in James City, enabling additional one-on-one conservation education and technical assistance. The program addresses previously developed properties that comply with code they were built under. Supported practices redirect and/or manage rainwater so it soaks into the ground, reduce improving groundwater reserves, or is used by plants, thus reducing the volume of rain that becomes stormwater, which can cause floods, erosion, and pollution of our ponds, streams, and rivers. This program focuses on smaller projects than James City usually does, and can provide complementary cost-share funding to other programs, such as the James City Clean Water Heritage Programs. The district is also a non-voting member of the James City Stormwater Programs Advisory Committee, and provides technical advice on request as resources allow. Challenges with the Virginia Conservation Assistance Program are erratic funding and especially insufficient funding of technical support to adequately cover technical assistance to applicants, outreach, the necessary training, and the 10-year inspection obligation associated with these practices. Potential interest in this program seems to be huge, given sufficient funding for cost-sharing and technical support. The district continues to work with the program as available resources allow. Colonial District wants to continue providing a valuable educational resource with unique knowledge and tailored programs to complement other sources of technical advice and education, but currently lacks available funds for this work despite all of our efforts in searching for follow-on funding to the $50,000 National Association of Conservation Districts grants awarded to the district for urban agricultural education. Thursday, the district will report status, excuse me, and preliminary results to the Stormwater and Resource Protection Director and the Stormwater Programs Advisory Committee on the finding of Phase 1 of the horse census. The subsequent full report will identify both the size of the horse population in the area addressed and potential benefits of a second-phase horse conservation program. This concludes our report. Unless, if there are any questions, well, thank you for your attention.
No questions? Thank you so much for a very thorough update. Appreciate that. That brings us to our proclamation, National Native American Day. And Ms. Sadler, if you would help with this, please, we will be presenting a proclamation to Chief Ann Richardson of the Rapahehannik Tribe.
For our next presentation, we'll be doing a proclamation for Native American Day, and I'd like to invite up and introduce you all to Chief Ann Richardson of the Rapahehannik Tribe to receive this proclamation as a descendant of Powhatan and Pocahontas. Chief Ann, bless you, come on up. Proclamation, Native American Day of Honor, November 23rd. James City County recognizes and celebrates the heritage of the Commonwealth of Virginia's seven federally recognized tribes and their leaders, the Chickahominy, Chickahominy Eastern Division, Monakin, Nansaman, Pamunkie, Rapahehannik, and Upper Matapani. We acknowledge that on these shores, your people were the original gatekeepers and stewards of this land. Whereas James City County is located where English explorers established the first successful English colony in the New World, we are here today to acknowledge that without the goodwill of the indigenous population of Virginia, our history would have taken an entirely different course due to the adversities originally faced and the lack of knowledge of the land. And whereas, if not for Pocahontas's fearless pleading to her father, the great Chief Powhatan, that Captain John Smith's life be spared in 1608, that this nation's history would be different. Through the compassion of a child, Captain Smith lived, and baskets of corn were immediately taken to starving settlers at James Fort, where only 40 of the original 104 survived. And whereas, 410 years later, we, the Board of Supervisors of James City County, which by the goodwill acts of the Powhatan Federation commemorate a day that reflects the goodwill of our indigenous tribes, who have survived centuries of injustices and are now recognized by our national government as sovereign nations. And whereas, today, we honor Chief Ann Richardson of the Rapahehannik Tribe, a descendant of Chief Powhatan and Pocahontas, with a promise to all seven tribes of Virginia to set aside one day of our calendar year to honor the indigenous people who assisted our forefathers in settling and forming the United States of America. And whereas, let this day be marked in American history, that we will forever extend our appreciation to the indigenous tribes of the Commonwealth of Virginia. From this day forth, we will recognize November 23rd as a day of unity and goodwill towards our native brothers and sisters. This will be a day we declared our land healed of past bloodshed and indifference, and birthed into a new beginning.
Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia hereby proclaim the 23rd day of November to be and is hereby proclaimed as Native American Day of Honor in the county of James City, and call upon all citizens to join in the observance of this occasion and extend the hand of fellowship and hospitality. Thank you so much. We're gonna get the board to come down?
Also, there may be others here representing the other six tribes mentioned, and if so, would you please stand to be recognized? Chief Ann, on behalf of the James City County Board of Supervisors, we honor you with this proclamation. I wanted to present to you these beautiful flowers to say thank you, and here's one of our pins of James City County. And bless your government. I know, today is 410 years later. I stand here in a place that was called Middle Plantation, where a wall was erected to keep our people out. And today, I've been welcomed in, and our tribes have been honored in this place. And so the curses that have been placed upon the land from bloodshed has been reversed today. And so I bless your government, and I bless the land of James City County. May God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. That brings us to the consent calendar. We have one minute's adoption, two, grant award, Comprehensive Community Corrections Act grant, Department of Criminal Justice Services, $7,476, excuse me, $746, woo! Sorry about that. FY19 DEQ litter grant, $13,889. Grant award now, OXON own? I know it's Narcan, but I, okay. For law enforcement, $2,025. Federal grant award Bulletproof Vest Partnership, $27,092. Acceptance of Funds, Virginia Forfeited Asset Sharing Program, $1,995. Contracts award annual stormwater construction and repair services. Contract awards annual building envelope technical support services. Initiation of consideration of amendments to the zoning and subdivision ordinances to address protections for the public water supply in areas of public health and water quality sensitivity. Encroachment agreements, King's Way and Queen's Path. Grant award Kinship Navigator Program, $40,000. Resolution to waive building permit fees for repairing damage caused by the tropical storm Michael and tornado in James City County. And I believe that is all. Is there a motion, or does anyone wish to pull?
Move the adoption of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to public hearings. First, we have sale of county property located at 6213 Old Moretown Road. And Liz Parman will give the staff presentation.
Yes, good evening, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Before you is a resolution authorizing sale of a parcel of land located at 6213 Old Moretown Road. Straight Gate Temple Church owns the adjacent parcel and has offered to buy the county-owned parcel for $36,400. The county purchased this property in 1996 for $11,000. And county staff have not identified a current or future need for the property. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions at this time for staff? Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing. Are there any comment cards? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing. And I will look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
I'll move the resolution approving the sale of property.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Conveyance of county property located at 1653 Green Mount Parkway. Liz Parman to give the staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Before you is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of a 0.0930 acre portion of county-owned property located at 1653 Green Mount Parkway to Green Mount Associates LLC. The county recently approved a site plan for the extension of Green Mount Parkway across county-owned property. The site plan for the Parkway extension calls for a slight adjustment to the planned right-of-way, thereby requiring the county to quit claiming this small portion of land. And staff does recommend approval.
Very much. There any questions of staff? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. Are there any public speakers? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and look to the board for discussion and/or a motion.
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to SUP 180024, Christ Community Church Multipurpose Building. Alex Barak is here. Hello.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Ms. Melissa Cheeves of DJG, Inc. has submitted an application for a place of public assembly on 9001 Richmond Road to construct a multipurpose building at the existing Christ Community Church. The property is currently zoned A1 general agricultural and is designated rural lands on the 2035 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. The church was built between the late 80s and early 90s and has been in operation since that time. In August 2017, the zoning ordinance was amended to change the places of public assembly use to a specially permitted use in A1. The proposed addition of the multipurpose building to the property requires the entire property come into conformance with the current zoning ordinance. Staff finds this proposal to be compatible with surrounding development and consistent with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this application with a vote of seven to zero, and staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application subject to the proposed conditions. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time? We will hear from the Planning Commission rep as well. With that, we would ask Mr. Schmidt to come forward, who is our Planning Commission rep this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and the complete Board of Supervisors. This will be a little bit redundant. It was a relatively brief public hearing that night in October. The planning staff report, as you've seen, was presented by Mr. Baruk, and it recommended approval of the specially used permit as it was believed to be in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan for A1-zoned lands. Following the staff presentation, one commissioner asked for a clarification about an adjacent residential driveway to the church property and how that residence's driveway would tie into the church driveway. Mr. Baruk followed up by specifying that per VDOT's recommendations, the residential driveway would come off of the church's driveway. There were no speakers during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Prior to the motion, several commissioners commented that they were very pleased at the thoroughness of the application. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of SUP-180024. And as you just heard, all seven commissioners were present during that hearing.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr.? Thank you very much. With that, I will open the public hearing. There are any cards this evening? I will close the public hearing. I will look to the board for any discussion and/or motion.
I'll move the approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is a proposed amendment to the county charter. Mr. Kinsman will give the staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Later in your meeting tonight will be your legislative agenda for 2019. One of the items on that legislative agenda is a proposed amendment to the county's charter that would allow staff to address junk cars on lots of two acres or less in a different manner than they would otherwise be able to. The Virginia Code requires that we hold a public hearing prior to any charter amendment, and so the proposed resolution would fulfill that requirement and recommend its adoption.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Kinsman? Right, with that, I will open the public hearing. With that, I will close the public hearing and I will look to the board.
I'll be happy to move the resolution. The item in this particular case will, if the General Assembly will allow us, I'll give the county the ability to address some serious problems with the slightly appearance of our older neighbor in particular. Effort.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to SUP 180011, 750 Blow Flats Road Borrow Pit Renewal, and SUP 180023, 700 Blow Flats Road Borrow Pit Renewal. Terry Costello will give our staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Mr. Jay Lipscomb has applied on behalf of USA Waste of Virginia and Branscombe Incorporated to renew their special use permits in order to continue the operation of borrow pits located at 700 and 750 Blow Flats Road. Both parcels are zoned M2 general industrial and are designated as general industry on the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The borrow pit operation involves excavating topsoil, dirt, sand, and clay from the property for use at other sites. There is an active mining permit from the Virginia Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy, and impacts associated with the borrow pit are overseen by the state through the applicant's operational plan. Special use permits, one for each property, were approved by the Board of Supervisors in 1992 to allow for the continued operation of these facilities with a five-year time limit as a condition of approval. Subsequent renewals were approved in 1997, 2000, 2005, and 2010, all with time limits of five and eight years. The two existing special use permits will expire on December 31st, 2018. As part of the current renewal process, the applicant has requested that the Board of Supervisors renew the two special use permits without any time limit. Staff recommends an eight-year time limit on the special use permits due to constantly evolving regulations regarding environmental protection. Staff finds an opportunity to review the conditions of the operation allows the county to address these changes and other impacts. The intentions of the applicant and the county are for this property to be redeveloped for economic development purposes in the future or have the capability for such redevelopment. All agencies have reviewed both SUP renewal applications and recommend approval with the proposed conditions. Staff finds the proposal to be consistent with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, the zoning ordinance, and surrounding development. On October 17th, the Planning Commission recommend approval of this application by a vote of seven to zero. Staff recommends that the board approve the application subject to the conditions listed in the resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions as you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time?
Okay, I've got a couple. I sat through a few of these and they started this pit back. When was it, do you know roughly?
The first SUP was 1992, but they were mining before that.
Long, long time before that. Is there, is there a reason? Because if they, if I'm getting this right, if they change anything or any operation, not only have to do it with the mining, but also with Jame City County if they're changing something that we've already set in place, is there a reason that we want to put a timeline on it, you know, five years or eight years? Is there a reason we can't go, let's do a 20-year, and then they don't have to spend the money and the time and the effort coming back when they're still doing the same thing they've been doing every year? It just seems practical for not only staff, but practical for the company as well. And I'd like to see, you know, going out to a 20-year, as long as nothing, we have it written in there, that if they change the operation or something, they're going to have to come back to us. Is there a reason?
Due to there's RPA and flood plan on the property, and sometimes regulations change, staff would like the opportunity to review it on a periodic basis to check the impacts of the activity.
Can we put something in there that would say staff, you know, that work it out there, where staff would go out there once a year and determine what's going on? And I'm sure that the mining group that they're with also, I know with another one in Jame City County, the regulations are so tough on mining anything out of the ground and what you bring in are so tight that we're just like a little top layer over top of what the feds and everything else are doing as far as keeping mining. So I don't think they're going to get out of control with what we're doing. I'm just wondering, you know, I'm sitting through a couple of these now while we don't have like a 20-year window and, you know, save everybody a little bit of time.
There is a yearly reporting that is required that's due January for the previous year, and there's a site visit that staff, that we go out there and check.
Okay, so we're covering that in that eight-year period. We're still covering ourselves?
Every year we get a report.
And if we did a 20-year, we'd still be covering ourselves?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we'll still have the reporting mechanism every year.
So the limit of time is not really the cause. We're just picking basically eight years because we did it before, eight years and five years from now. So if we did a 20-year, it would still be the same as eight. It would just lengthen that time before they have to come back for an application?
Yes.
Okay.
Could I just get a little bit of information about what other inspections do have to occur then through the Department of Mining?
I know they do yearly inspections, but I could have the applicant address that so he's more familiar with that.
Mr. Schmidt?
I had, no, I had one other question, and that was, this has been going on since 1992, and then you mentioned that ultimately the plan would be to redevelop this when it was, the operation was concluded or terminated. Do we have any idea what the estimated lifespan of this thing would be? Is it, I mean, is it something that could go on another 50 or 60 years or do we have any idea at all?
I think the potential is there, but I can have the applicant. He probably has a better idea of how long time period.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Ann, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. Okay, so here we go. It was another relatively brief hearing. Following the staff report, the commissioners had several curiosities about the oversight process at the borrow pit, which ultimately carried over into discussions with the applicant, Mr. Lipscomb, and think a similar process might take place here tonight. So Mr. Lipscomb told the commissioners that the Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy inspects the site every two years and that the county zoning and environmental staff also inspect the site, actually on an annual basis. Mr. Lipscomb was the only speaker during the public hearing. The commissioners then discussed the time limitations, so you'll be interested in this, Supervisor Hippel, for the SUP and, you know, what amount of years would be appropriate. Of course, planning staff had recommended the eight, and the applicant was requesting no time limit. But the commissioners were, I'd say, overall sort of felt hesitant about such a move. Really, you know, there was the environmental regs changing, but for us, we kind of zeroed in on the fact that within the next eight years, the property, we've got two different owners for these two properties, but these could, property could change hands. And thus far, through what we can see in the county records, that the current owners have been good stewards of the land. So, you know, if there was no time limit, that would continue in perpetuity with the SUP. So that was kind of where we came around and decided to stick to the eight-year time limit. And you heard already, by a vote of seven for and none against, we recommended approval of the SUP renewals subject to the conditions in the staff report. That is all.
The time limit was more of if they sell?
Yeah, I'd say that it was, like I said, it was a brief discussion, but following the public hearing, that's kind of where we headed. There were, there was, I can't remember which commissioner it was, but at least one who did kind of go down the track you were going with, well, wait, maybe we should just open this up. And assuming, you know, things kind of stayed status quo, but there was some pushback. And I think it seemed to me that folks came around, well, we did through our vote, but to, you know, that was kind of the big concern for us. But I think, yeah, like you said, the environmental regs are, we've got the state as a good sort of watchdog for that.
Right. And, you know, and I was, if they were to leave here today and sell tomorrow, we'd be in that same situation. We can't control that. What I'm thinking of is longevity and cost to the citizens and/or the businesses that are in the community and having to come back. I know there's a lot of costs with everything they do, but, you know, and thank you for y'all's opinions and y'all do a great job on the Planning Commission. We really utilize y'all's thoughts and what y'all go through to try to vet it out to get it to here. But yeah, that's the only thing I was thinking of was not, because if they were to sell and go to another company, they would probably have to come back before us again to set something up. I don't know, Adam, with that, if they sold that property, but that SUP goes with the land, it doesn't go with the seller.
Correct, it goes with the land, so as long as they're in compliance, then they wouldn't need to come back to us.
So if they sold tomorrow, it wouldn't matter either way?
That's correct.
Or if they sold in 20 years?
That's correct.
Not that they're selling. Don't want to get that out. Elizabeth's home with a lot of money now. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, well, I would be curious about the cost of the SUP process in the case of this kind. How much the applicant had to expend?
That would be for staff, not Mr. Schmidt?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He does a lot of digging. He does.
Here is a cost for the original SUP, and then there's a cost for the renewal. And the renewal is a little bit less than what the original SUP was for.
So what kind of?
I think it's $400 was for renewal for each SUP.
And do we have a sense of the approximate annual revenues associated with?
That I do not know.
Maybe Mr. Lipscomb can tell me about that.
All right, with that, we will open the public hearing. So far, I have one speaker, and that would be Julian Lipscomb.
Thank you. I'm Julian H. Lipscomb, Jr., and I reside at 3144 Hollow Oak Drive in Toano. And I want to thank the board for entertaining our request this evening, and I want to thank the staff for getting us to this point. They've been a lot of help to me. I am the environmental manager with Branscombe Incorporated, and one of my many tasks is that I have to apply and comply with all our permits. And since our renewal is up, that's why we're here even before you today. I want to give you a little bit of history with our pits. We have been mining on that property since the early 70s, well before zoning ordinances. And back then, the pit was known as Lee Bickford Pit. We leased the land from, one of the parcels from Mr. William Lee, and the other parcel was leased from Mr. James Bickford. And sometime, probably in the late 90s, Mr. Lee sold his property to Henry Branscombe. And Mr. Bickford sold his parcel to USA Waste. So I don't know how we weren't in that conversation, but we missed out on that property. But what we have are two parcels, but only one mining permit. So everything's regulated by the State Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy, and they do inspect us twice a year. It's not every two years, but twice a year. And the Federal Mine Safety and Health Administration also comes out twice a year and inspects us. So in addition to that, we have a field trip with the County Environmental Division and the zoning once a year in December to look at what we've done before I draft up the new map to present to the county as part of our yearly inspection report. I, I don't know specific dollars, but this past year's been very good for us with Lee's pit. We took approximately 90,000 tons of material out of the ground, a borrow to Atkinson Drive, which is the, the project, VDOT project in Newport News that you see that's gonna, the new bridge crossing the interstate. So that has been very good for us this year. Now, we have an agreement with USA Waste that since they own the property, they own the mineral rights, we own, we maintain the permits, both the state mine permit and the county permits, that we mine their clay for them when they need it for their landfills. And they're hit and miss on how much clay they need. We probably haven't mined on their property in two and a half to three years because they'll usually get one big order for Bethel landfill and we'll, we'll dig it, we'll haul it to them and they'll stockpile it and use it till it's gone and then we'll renegotiate to, to dig more clay for them. Our reclamation we are proposing is to be able to redevelop that property for industrial use. We recognize the value of it as an industrial park, an expansion agreement possibly. So that is our goal. We are bringing back clean fill, inert fill, to backfill any of the, the holes we've made to make it where it's a buildable site. Now, we did leave on the USA Waste side, the option for them to develop or establish a wetlands mitigation bank, if that's a business option they so choose. Down the road, they may decide that industrial development's better for their property too and may end up requesting it be backfilled. So that's where that stands, but we have, the conversation about the, the time restriction, it's really been fairly arbitrary. The last time I came up for renewal, it was for five years and we negotiated and staff and they bumped it to eight because I had asked for it to see if they could waive the, waive the expiration date. And that's what we, I did again ask for that at, at the planning commission to see if they would consider waiving the eight years. And there was debate about a 10-year and, but then at the end of the evening, the motion was made to adopt staff recommendation, it was back to eight. But we have been good stewards of the land as well as good neighbors and we've been doing this a long time and we respectfully request that you grant the extension of the special use permit without an expiration date. And that thus condition 12, we'd ask that be removed, which is the, the date. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Question to Mr. Lipscomb.
Uh, so Mr. Lipscomb, um, uh, but you're, you're applying for both properties, but one, only one is property that you own?
Correct.
Right. And so the other one, um, you would still want the, the, um-
Yes, sir. They would like to have that too on their property.
Right. And we have a long history of, of, uh, participation with you, you all.
Yes, sir. Since, since they acquired Mr. Bickford's property.
Uh-huh. Uh, and, and so, um, I guess I'm, I'm just wondering, um, how long, I think the question was, was asked about how long you think that you may continue this kind of an operation?
It's predicated on the amount of material that, that's needed and that meets the specs. So I would say we may have another 15 to 20 years of mining. Santa Phil has considered, or Waste Management has considerably longer because we rarely dig their land. Their clay is there should they need it.
Y'all hold the mining permit?
We do.
So if y'all close down, then they would have to get a mining permit if they wanted to mine their site?
Correct.
Okay. It wouldn't be, all right, we're closing down, we're doing this. They would then have to apply and go through that in order to get a mining permit to continue their operation?
And they would have to, we would have to transfer the mine permit to them and they would have to accept it. But as part of that buying permit, we're paying license fees, renewal fees and bonds we pay the state for all the land that we disturb. So it's, it's quite well regulated between the state, the federal government, local and the county.
How many, and, and this may be a, a staff question, with our SUPs, and I'm, and I'm, I'm just looking for a little ease on businesses that have been operating a long time in the county and need an SUP to continue doing, they, they were doing one thing for X amount of time and then all of a sudden, regulations came in place. So you have to comply with the regulations that are coming in place and that's just fact of life. Um, but how many do we know, and I, I wish I thought about this earlier, I would email you to, to give you a heads up and I don't mean to put you on the spot. Do we have a lot of SUPs or any other SUPs that are out there similar to this that, that are doing the same thing day after day, but have to come back and renew every eight or five or eight years? Or do we just, oh, there you go. Paul's been around long, he always gets all the questions.
Around long.
Thank you, Paul.
No worries at all. Um, I don't think there are very many others at all. I think this one's a bit unique because this type of use is more of a temporary use. There may only be one or two others that may have a sunset clause out there. One of them will be, there's a, a short-term rental over on Merrimack Trail that's gonna show back up on your agenda here in the next month or two, but I can't think of hardly any others.
I'm thinking if, if, if you're thinking 15 or 20 years in business and we put it at 20 years, that doesn't mean you'll be operating, if you close down in 15 and redevelop that land, which talking to our economic development team, you know, that's a possibility as, as we move down that road to, to, um, do something in Greenmount and, and reutilize that land after what you've already done. Um, so if we did a 20-year, you know, and you're stopping in 20 years, 15 or 20 years, well, you know, it might, I'm just trying to, trying to keep down the, um, the cost and, and, you know, look forward to, look, look after the, the businesses that are in the community that have been doing such a great job and, and working hard and, and doing everything we've asked them and, you know, and, and being able that staff can go out there and view and watch what you're doing and the state's out there twice a year. And so I think there's a lot, it's not like you're just, you know, wild out there just pulling dirt out wherever you want. There's a lot of regulations in place that, that keep you from doing X and still protect the environment.
That was part of my thinking with requesting a, no expiration is if we finish mining the land and we decide we want to develop it and prepare it for, um, uh, some sort of warehouse in the future, we, I believe I'd have, we'd have to come back before the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors because the use has changed. We're no longer a borrow pit or a, or recycle where we have our concrete and asphalt. Thank you.
Hey, with that, are there any other, are you, are you-
That's right.
Going, okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and look to the board.
Um, I'd, uh, move the adoption of the resolution as presented, uh, so I'd entertain a motion to, uh, extend it to 10 years. Um, again, uh, I always feel that, especially since, since we're really talking about a relatively modest expense in, in this particular instance, that, uh, we'd never, we never know what might happen to the land. It's, it's not the applicant that we're evaluating, it's the land. And, uh, if it's only got about 20 more years left in this purpose, then that's only one more, uh, visit to us and it does give us the opportunity to review how things are going, what's happening. Um, I think that's a reasonable kind of approach.
Oh, can I convince you to 20?
No.
Now, can I?
But you can, you can, you can move to amend.
That's what I was gonna say. I make a motion, amend it to 20 and then we vote on that motion and if that motion doesn't carry, then we vote on a second motion.
Stated like a parliamentarian, yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm gonna make a motion to extend the, um, go with SUP 180011, but extend it to a, I think it was line item 12, extend it to a 20-year period instead of-
It'd be a motion to amend, uh, Mr. McGlinnan's motion. So Mr. McGlinnan's motion was for 10 years, yours is to make it for 20 and then whenever that's decided, then you would vote on Mr. McGlinnan's motion.
So which one are we voting on?
Mr. Hippel.
His, his first.
I go first. I call for roll.
Okay.
10 to 20.
10 to, yeah.
Like 15 may have been where I would have gone.
Throw another one out there.
That's, that's me. So, Mr. Stevens.
You want me, you want me to?
It's okay. You've done, no, you've done it now, Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Uh, no.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
No.
Ms. Larson?
No.
Motion fails.
So now we're to the main motion.
I got 10.
Right.
How we vote on the 10?
I would have gone with 15.
Don't be early. Don't tell him that.
It's the truth.
You want to move another motion on top of it?
That's all right. We'll go with Mr. Mr., now we'll consider Mr. McGlinnan.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. That brings us to board considerations, revisions to Chapter 5 of the James City County Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. Mr. Teague.
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's a second one on there, there's two pieces of property, so just-
Yeah, I, I had intended to, to make the motion for the both resolutions, but I'll, I'll move the second one now with the same 10-year.
Okay. Mr. Stevens?
Uh, Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Mr. Kinsman. Revisions to Chapter 5 of the James City County Personnel Policies and Procedure Manual. Mr. Teague.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am Patrick Teague, Director of Human Resources, coming to you today for a revision to Chapter 5 of the County Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. Volunteering is an important activity to improve the community and to provide unique and low-cost activities for team building for our staff. We propose revision to Chapter 5 of the County Personnel Policy Procedure Manual to revise Section 5.4B, Number 7, which would add eight hours of annual volunteer leave to our current eight-hour allotment for school leave. This is an annual allotment and would not pay out or carry over year to year. Staff recommends approval. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right. With that, I will see if there's a motion.
Adoption of the resolution?
Thank you.
Or the, or the, uh, policy manual change?
Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to federal grant award, Department of Justice, Office of Violence Against Women, $416,248, Chief Reinheimer, but I have a feeling somebody else is coming forward.
Chief's got hair.
The chief was here.
He was mad, he was.
Well, we're glad to see you. Good evening.
Board members, I'm Hal Diggs, Agency Director for Colonial Community Corrections. I'm here on behalf of the $416,248,000 continuation grant from the Office on Violence Against Women. We initially got this grant three years ago in the amount of $450,000. This is another three years to expand on what we've already started for the, excuse me, for the county and other localities. But basically, um, the partners in this are Colonial Community Corrections, Commonwealth Attorney's Office, Victim Witness Office, Avalon Shelter for Women and Children, and we're also bringing in City Williamsburg and York County. They're starting their LAP assessment protocols hopefully into this year, if not the beginning of next. So basically, this is a fantastic opportunity for our county to, uh, grow in preventing and prosecuting crimes against women. I'll take any questions you might have. I was told to be brief, so I hope that's brief enough.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Diggs. Any questions?
There's only a modest increase over the grant from three years ago. Does that cover the, the, uh, costs of the programming that you've been doing? Are you, are you changing the program? Does-
There were some slight modifications. We're not doing the, um, we had a conference two of the previous three years. We're not doing the conference anymore. We've changed to a more regional training-type atmosphere. We've reduced the hours for our pre-trial officer from 20 down to 12. Um, so we just didn't need the cost. Still, five positions, but they're all very part-time. Um, two with the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, part-time prosecutor and victim witness advocate. Then we have a pre-trial officer, 12 hours. We have a probation officer, 28 hours, and then the grant coordinator, uh, 24 hours.
Thank you very much. So I would look to the board for a motion for the appropriation.
Motion.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, it is a grant award, Commonwealth Attorney Victims' Witness Grant Program, $183,260. Mr. Commonwealth Attorney himself, Mr. Green?
Good morning, excuse me, good afternoon, good evening.
Good afternoon.
Just feels like you've been here a long time.
Long day. Uh, my name is Nathan Green, I'm the Commonwealth Attorney for City Williamsburg and James City County. I'm here today to ask the board to, to grant the acceptance of an award that we have received for the past 13 years. It's $183,260 for the, uh, Violence Against Women grant as well. Uh, this money helps fund our victim witness program. It funds both our director as well as the deputy director, as well as a part-time victims' advocate. Those three positions are our primary, are our primary, uh, tip of the spear on who deals with the victims and witnesses of crimes, especially our most serious crimes. Uh, it's those three positions that tackle our homicides, uh, sexual assaults and assaults against children. Um, so these three, this grant, uh, has been in place for obviously a number of years. It has grown. Uh, it grew approximately two years ago to move from just the two positions to the two and a half. And then with the, the money that, um, Mr. Diggs just spoke of, we were able to grow that into a full-time position. So I'm asking the board to, to accept these grant funds.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you for coming, appreciate it. With that, I would look to the board for the approval of the resolution for the grant award.
Motion for approval.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to contract award, Ambler's House Exterior Restoration Project, $498,732. Sean Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman. Before you tonight is a resolution for the, uh, contract award of the Ambler's House. It's the exterior restoration project. The Ambler's House is located at the Jamestown Beach Event Park. It's on the National Register of Historic Places and the Virginia Landmark Registry. Uh, a portion of the exterior restoration will include, but not limited to, uh, repair of the slate roof, uh, cleaning and repair of the brick veneer in the chimneys, repair of the, um, replacement of storm windows, repair of the actual windows themselves, uh, removal of asbestos, lead paint abatement and painting, um, as well as some gutter replacement. Uh, James City County participated in a joint procurement with the Newport News Public Schools, uh, utilizing a competitive bidding process through cooperative procurement. past, uh, performed satisfactory work for James City County and was determined to be a responsive and responsible bidder. Uh, in addition, they have also, uh, completed extensive historical restoration projects, both in Virginia and in the Hampton Roads area. And, uh, the project will, um, be funded through tourism investment funds that were approved in the fiscal year eighteen and nineteen budgets. Uh, staff recommends approval of the attached resolution authorizing the contract award to Centennial Contractors in the amount of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
A couple of questions. What's the asbestos situation out there?
There is asbestos. It's a, it's a fiber wrap. The, the house used to have a boiler system for heating in the basement and, uh, a portion of, we have to repair part of the floor and we actually have to encapsulate part of the crawl space. And to get that, we actually need to, uh, remove the asbestos itself to make it safe for, for workers. Um, so that'll be actually one of the very first things we do in, in the project.
And just for, um, the public's edification, what are the long-range goals for the Ambler House?
I believe that, um, the economic development is, is working on a, a partnership with that for, for, uh, events in the future. I'm actually not part of that.
He's on the construction side.
That's cool. All right. Thank you.
All right. I would, are there any further questions? Okay. Thank you. I would look to the board for approval of the resolution authorizing the contract award to Centennial Contractors Enterprises.
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon, by the way. Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That brings us to 2019 legislative agenda. Mr. Kinsman?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, what you have before you is your 2019 proposed legislative agenda. We spoke about each of these items in detail at your work session, so I won't go through them again. Really, you have three sort of big themes in there. It's, uh, increased ability to address junk cars in certain neighborhoods, uh, increased ability to protect the county against developers who walk away from projects, and an increased ability to protect citizens from loose dogs. Uh, otherwise, most of the other items on there are carryover from previous years, and I recommend that you adopt the attached resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Kinsman?
Motion for adoption?
Okay. Um, Mr. Stevens?
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I would just add that I appreciate several members of the board have worked with citizens to help develop this legislative agenda and because of things that have happened to us as a county over not just this past year, but of the several past years. And so this is, this is very much a citizen-driven, um, agenda this year, and, and especially want to thank Mr. Kinsman, who has all helped craft this, and we will be going forward to Richmond. And we also have our legislators letters coming to our work session to meet with us over this, and we hope that we can ask them to carry pieces of this legislation and, and have some, have some luck there.
Fair at all.
Amen. But, so, thank you. And we've just also returned from our VACO conference where their legislative agenda was discussed and one that we will also be, uh, helping, we hope, to get some movement on in Richmond. And several of these same items are in theirs as well. That brings us to FY 2018 School Year End Spending Plan Appropriation, one million, eight hundred, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine. Sharon Day. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. At a meeting on October nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Williamsburg James City County School Board adopted a spending plan for the fiscal year eighteen year-end funds. Those funds represent underspending by the school division for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. The school division estimates that the total year-end surplus is approximately two-point-seven million. In accordance with the city and county school contract, the county's share of the total local spending for fiscal year eighteen was ninety-point-five-four percent, and that is based on school enrollment. As a result, approximately two-point-four million would be returned to the county. The planned fiscal year two thousand and twenty capital improvement budget includes six hundred thousand of that anticipated surplus. The spending plan adopted by the Williamsburg James City County School Board includes county funds of approximately one-point-eight million. Additional documentation has been provided by the school division regarding their request. The resolution, if adopted, approves the school board's request, requested spending plan and appropriates the funding in the county's capital budget. It is my understanding that the school board also has a meeting tonight, attended by the same staff that would normally come to this meeting to answer our questions. Therefore, the superintendent did provide a few remarks that she's asked that I convey on her behalf. First, the twelve items that are being requested, four of those items are actually below the CIP threshold, which is currently fifty thousand dollars. That would include items such as the Matthew, Matthew Whaley Elementary School entrance, the Toano Middle School bleachers, a replacement maintenance truck, and a parking lot extension at the central office. Also, of those twelve items, three additional items are not CIP-related. That includes cafeteria table replacements, portable field lights, and also textbook replacements. And finally, the Berkeley well, the Berkeley Middle School well removal has been included in the CIP's request since two thousand and sixteen, and it's currently not funded into an out year. However, due to safety concerns, the school division would like to move that up. That concludes my remarks, and I'll answer any questions that I can.
Questions?
I've got a few.
Well, you go right ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. You know, each year, and I, and, and I'm glad I support the schools, so each year we have a surplus left over. And, or each year I've sat on this board, we've had it left over, and we decide at this time to, you know, what we want to do with it. One year is buses, one year is books, one year says, one year's that. I would think that it would be a simpler process if, do, do we know what their, their ask will be for this coming year?
We have not received that yet.
Okay. I'm sure it's going to be increased over this last year, because everything increases, and I'm not saying school, but everything increases. So, why wouldn't the funds that we have left over this year, and it's up to them to what they do with it once it leaves our hands, why wouldn't the funds from this year go to offset the increase that we're going to see next year, rather than spend this and then we'll have another increase next year? Why wouldn't we take these funds and apply them to next year's increase, and that may lessen that impact on us when we go through our budget next year? To me, it just seems common sense. And, um, I know you're not here to answer that, so that's not, that's not for you, but that's something, and I notice with our textbooks and all that, and I agree, you know, when a textbook gets a certain age, we need to, but as technology's growing, you would think we'd be going to eBooks, and that's what I'm going online with the books, and the textbook would come in on the laptops. It seems like everybody's having that days, and, and instead of spending a hundred and eighty-two dollars on a book, we maybe spend twenty-five dollars on an eBook, and everybody has them. I, I don't know if those are the right costs, so, um, I know that the, the books are. And it's always a tough thing, because, you know, we, we, I know I can talk for this board, want our children educated the best we can get. We want them the brightest. We want, that's our future to carry us forward. So it's not a, what is a school not doing? It's, to me, a, a common, um, plus and minus. We know we're going to have a increase next year. Let's take this money and put it to the increase next year, and, and the school's going to decide what's the best spend on that funds that's coming in, rather than doing this amount now, and then when we get our budget, having that, now we're going to figure out how to come up with that money. Does that make sense?
It does. Um, that certainly would be an option. Uh, this is one-time monies, and so anytime, uh, you know, you're, one of the considerations with funding it for next year is what's in the operating budget tends to be reoccurring expenditures, whereas year-end surplus money typically is one-time money, or at least money you can't necessarily bank on from one year to the next. So historically, those items have been used for more one-time purchases.
Correct, and I understand that, but, um, you know, we can't say, okay, next year we'll have probably two million. Last couple of years, we had about two million. We can't say next year. They may be flat, dead to the last dollar, but we know that may come, and we know there's going to be always an increase of some sort. I've never seen a decrease on this board yet. Um, so we're planning on that, but if we can take this and offset that increase, then that won't hurt as much as we move forward. And, and then they can decide where they want to spend it, and they'll know their wants and needs and, and desires of what they have to spend and what they don't.
Well, if I could, um, just to tag on to what Mr. Hippel was saying, I think part of the, the issue that I have with this process each year is the process. It seems like we have a budget, and we, like you said, we all want what's best for the kids and the schools, and then at the end of the year, there's the surplus, and what do we do with it? So, in the, and I'm not sure, you know, and granted, this is for the schools, but since we're talking about this tonight, in the future, I'm not sure if there's another way to address this process-wise, in that if, if it turns out that we have to do it like this because it's one-time spending, perhaps a list could be given to us in advance on what things might potentially, but, you know, before we get to this point, just for the sake of transparency, so everybody, the citizens, everybody knows what we're going to be looking at if there is excess, if that's how we're going to continue with this process. So, I, I guess ideally, I'd like to see no leftover money at the end of the, the year. That way, we know everything's been budgeted. I mean, that's kind of how we operate. I would like to see the schools do that as well. And, um, so I guess I have a question for Mr. Stevens, if perhaps you could find this out, um, on what enrollment projections is hiring done and why? I'd, I'd love to know that before we have our joint meeting, and, um, that would be helpful to have that little piece of information. But just to tag on with Mr. Hippel, I, I would agree that something in this process needs to change a little bit, so that we're not out there to me and here, and to me and there. I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot, but to me, it's a lot of money. So, um, anyway, it's a process that I'm looking at. Thank you.
Just a, a question. Um, you know, the way we operate is we never operate at a deficit. You're not allowed to spend. We just, we have a limit. So, you know, they run out of money, they run out of money. So, a good stewardship of the money would usually wind up with some underspending. Magnitude of that underspending, as a percentage of their total budget, if I remember correctly, was somewhere around two percent. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, you're looking at trying to figure out ninety-eight percent of, of, of a, of a budget that you can't go over. You want to get as close as you can to it without going over. Um, and so I, I understand that, you know, that's, it's a significant amount of money, and I, I think there's a process we have to go through. I agree. I think we need to have a better understanding of how they do their budgeting for, uh, personnel, whether they're using the same figures that we are trying to use for school projection or of, of need and everything. And I think that's, the, this, the school liaison committee is a very good place that we can have, start having that discussion and start working at it. But I just wanted to put it a little more in context, in, in that, um, you know, I spent twenty years, twenty-four years in the military, and the attitude there was, if we had it, if you didn't spend it at the end of the year, you lost it. And so there was a, there, there was a, a real impetus to be wasteful and get rid of it. Uh, here, there is an impetus to be, uh, conservative, to have it left over, because then they can get some of the things that they weren't otherwise able to get. So I, you know, I, I, I understand your concerns, but I, I, I think it's, it's, uh, looking at it in, in the bigger picture. I, 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 I think we have to tweak it a little bit, but I think they're being very responsible with the money we're giving them. Oh, I, I agree. I think they're being very responsible, but it's, it's not that. If we have it left over, you know, they're, they, they can spend whatever they, however they feel it fits. Once it's released from us, if they said they needed fifty-two buses, and all of a sudden they need to spend over here, and we can only do twenty-eight, then they're going to come back next year to ask for the leftovers, which is there, that's the way the system works, and we know that. If there's money left over, and I, and my hat's off to them, that has been every year. It's not saying, you know, anything, but they've done a great job of managing that money. But if they, if they do, then that money, we ought to just apply it to the next year's wants, and then they're, they're still getting it, you know, but they're, they're getting it in the next budget cycle, and in that way, it helps when they say, we need X amount. Well, there's two million, we're taking off that amount, because here, we've already got an earmark to go into that. And then they'll spend it where they need to. And I just think it's, to me, it's, it's, it's common sense. Take this leftover money and put it to next year's budget, and we know we're going to go over a little bit, boom, put it over there, and, and if next year, there's nothing left, well, we know we've got an increase anyhow. We'll have to make that up and figure out where we're going to make it up. So, rather than spend it now, and I know, I know, I, I can almost guarantee you that when we do the budget, there will be an increase, because this is a fact of life. So, I'm just trying to head off that increase as little as possible, but still make sure the school has everything it needs.
I, I think it makes good sense for us to, to ask questions and, and look for transparency, and I think that's all, all to the good. Um, I, I do think it's, you know, it's a challenge when you're, um, trying to figure out, for instance, in a given year, how much do I have to budget for personnel? Well, I've got to start with the assumption that the person that I'm hiring at the beginning of the year is going to be there all year long. And frequently, you have people leave in the middle of the year, and that accounts for a lot of the, the surplus that occurs. The, you're saving salary for a little while because a position's vacant, uh, or you didn't actually find all those school bus drivers you needed, or, um, whatever else it might be. So, it, it is, it is very difficult to come in right on the money, and I don't want to send any message that says, you know, we want you to spend everything just because you have it.
Me either.
Right. Uh, and, and this, this does give us an opportunity, when they come back to us, to review what they're proposing to do it on. I, I, I had the same question that you did, Mr. Hippel, about eBooks, and then, and, um, uh, Ms. Larson reminded me that, uh, uh, we don't provide the equipment on which students can read those eBooks at home, uh, for most students, right?
Middle schoolers have.
Middle schoolers have.
Now, that could have changed since, uh, for the last three years, but when I was on the school board, only middle schoolers had a laptop take-home program.
And, and I do have a little experience with ordering books, um, and what I find is that, shockingly enough, um, eBooks are not so cheap compared to printed books. Uh, and one of the other aspects about it is that when you buy an eBook, it doesn't get passed on to the next student. Kind of there. That's it. Uh, and so, uh, you know, these are a little bit more challenging, uh, kinds of, kinds of issues to, to deal with. Um, and I, I think the, the real key to it is exactly what you were doing tonight, which is to ask questions and, and answers we get on it, and satisfied with that.
Sure. Now, if you, we can either vote on this, this evening. We can have staff take the questions back, bring it to our next meeting for a vote, or we can vote at, we can, uh, not vote, but we can talk to them at our joint meeting as well with, that is a joint meeting with the city, and, uh, where we're talking about CIP projects and future, what, what the plan is for future enrollment. So...
Is our, is our meeting is after our next board meeting, correct?
Correct. It's December sixth. So, I...
It's after your work session.
After our work session.
Before your next board meeting, but after your work session.
But before our, December thirteenth is what the school's, correct?
So, so you can think among yourselves and let me know. Um, I, frankly, the, the entrances, I, that is what is needed for security. So, um, and the snow removal, we've gotten in situations with this, with the schools where we've had to pay an enormous amount of money for snow removal, so they've been slowly building their own, getting their own equipment, and I'm very happy to see that. Uh, the, the well removal with safety, um, I don't, you know, I, I understand, and I, you know, I think, I, I was curious about the textbooks, just because the age of the textbooks and what kind of, what kind of rotation are we on? And we seemed, that seems to be very old. So, are we not, why are we not replacing them? And maybe they're not coming out that more often. But, um, but I think it's, to me, when I look at this list, it's one of those things where pay me, pay now or pay later. I, I don't see anything on here that I go, well, why, you know, why wouldn't they need these things? And so, um, I was curious about the portable field lights, and maybe Mr. Carnif- no, he says no. So, um,
I was curious.
I was just curious about that, uh, because I thought that the county had worked pretty closely with the schools to make sure that we had lighted fields. So, I'm not sure what, what that is about. Do you, do you have any idea?
I know they're at Lafayette High School, based on the information that they submitted, but I don't know anything further than that.
So, that could be maybe for the, they have a field hockey, uh, they have a field hockey field there that maybe they're, maybe they're using. So...
So, I guess my inclination would be to say that, that, uh, I think this has been a very productive discussion. Um, I don't see things here that are glaringly out of line. I think that probably we can get explanations for things which we'd like to know about for this year, um, but I think we might want to convey the idea about what would be helpful for us going forward in terms of, uh, what, how, how we figure out the, um, staffing needs and what they're going to do about, uh, capital items and so forth.
Right. And it, I do like, if they're, during the budget process, if they, if there is a way to note, just in their budget book, if there were... just in their budget book, if there were, and maybe they're not comfortable with that because they, not sure if they're going to have leftover money, but if they had some, what would, what would some possible leftover funds be, be pointed in the direction of? So, but.
One other question, and it is, of this amount of money, do you have any idea what portion of it is generated by surplus from personnel?
It's about 2 million.
Yes.
From attrition.
So it's a significant, a significant amount of this, of the surplus comes from personnel. So I think one of the things we need to really hone in on is this low enrollment figure and how we can tighten that number up a little bit with them to still give them the flexibility they need, but maybe not generate quite as much in the future.
Yeah. And I'm, and you know, my comments are not as much of how they put their budget together or how they figure it out because, you know, we figure out our budget totally different too. And we've got to stay within our parameters as well and make adjustments as our budget goes along as well. It's just the funds that are, that we have left over, we can apply it then to next years. And, you know, whether they have funds left over or not, it's the kind of their wheelhouse to determine all that and what they need and what they don't need. But I would like to wait till after we meet jointly so that we can sit there and ask some of these questions that, you know, are just popping up tonight that, you know, none of us probably thought about until we sat down here and started discussing this as far as, you know, we've got, I think in the next 10 years, let's see, no, 16 years, we've got 160 buses, if I remember correctly, that we're going to be buying. You know, how many buses do we have? I'd like to know. And if we're buying buses, I'm still wanting to put seat belts on the new buses. And, you know, I can't take my kids anywhere without a seat belt on, which is what it should be. And we're bringing buses out that, you know, do not have seat belts. And I know it's a cost, but if we lose one child, it costs nothing. I mean, that is nothing to the parents to lose that child. And I think we ought to, if we're doing buses and we're going to buy new buses, then buy them with the seat belts. I've noticed that, you know, the drivers have seat belts, and which I'm glad they do. I want the children to have seat belts as well. And I know it's tough to get them in their seat and get seat belts on, but you know what? If it's a state law, it won't be hard then. And, and so I'm still going to push for that seat belt in that school bus because I think it's a, I don't want to see any child hurt on a school bus. I won't go to school. I know none of these board members do either. And, you know, and there's a cost associated with it. And, but, you know, we're, we're looking at almost for the next 16 years, 10 buses a year. You know, if you, if you lay, I know some years it's five and 17 and four and 18 and 12 and, but roughly 10 buses a year. That's a, that's a number I can budget out. I can look at that and go, okay, for the next 16 years, y'all, you're looking at 10 buses a year. I don't hear none of that about buses. They better be getting 10 buses a year for 16 years. We had, should have had the beautiful fleet of brand-new buses riding up and down the road. And, and that's what we expect. You know, if you tell us you're going to put it in that, I want to see 10 new buses a year. And so there's my two cents. But I think if we, if we meet with the Madam Chair, if we, if we, if we're able to meet, some of this stuff will come out as we talk about. Because if we vote on this tonight, which I have no problem with voting on it, but if we vote on it tonight, we'll probably forget a lot of the questions and concerns that we had. You know, we'll go on to the next.
Here is one suggestion I would like to make though. And I'm fine, you know, if there's not a big problem with holding off on some of these items, then that's, that's fine. I'd like to get the questions in writing because I don't want that joint meeting to get too much into the weeds. I think we've got some big issues that we need to talk about seriously with the, with the city council and the school board.
Yeah. What my suggestion actually was going to be is that we do, if there's questions coming off of this, let's get them in writing, let's get them to staff, let's, let's the school and try to talk about that, or not talk about it, but try to get those things answered. And then if we need further dissemination of that, have someone from the schools come to our December 13th meeting rather than necessarily doing it at the joint meeting. Because this is, this is our issue, not with, and we're with the city at that point to talk about, you know, we're doing a specific, which I, I'm so glad that we are, that we're doing it before the budget, the budgets go down. But, so that would be the way that I would propose if we're going to put it off. Let's get the questions to staff, get them answered, and then see if someone from the school system can come on the 13th. Now, there's always the possibility that they have a meeting on the 13th as well. I don't know their, just their schedule for December, but maybe they could send somebody. There's a lot, there's people over there.
Yeah, I was surprised we didn't have them on here tonight.
And I just want to, the one thing I want to urge caution on about the, I would like to know the answer to the question as well about how staffing is done. I just don't want any assumptions to be made because there may be a reason that, and frankly, I don't, I don't know the answer either. So, you know, what is the difference in the staffing if that's truly the way that it's done?
One of the, one of the challenges obviously you face is that when you're talking about the overall enrollments at different grade levels, that's one thing. When you're talking about things like perhaps students with special needs, you're going to have a very different kind of student teacher ratio. And that might not work as well with the most.
Right. And I mean, we've just heard where, you know, yes, you're right, our budget is, this, the school budget will probably increase because the state contribution is going to decrease as it has. And the schools are still being funded, barely at keeping up with inflation and still not caught up to before 2009 numbers. So yes, we are going to look at, and then we also, we're told there's just been a continued increase in the special ed population, which is also putting a strain on their budget. So is everyone okay with moving forward that way? Okay. And so, and you.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If Teresa would compile the questions we had tonight and then get with each one of us, is this what you're really wanting to, you know, find out about? That'll save us all having to go back and recreate it ourselves. We can do it right off the video.
And you'll be able to reach out to their CFO?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't need a motion or anything, do we? Okay. That brings us to the Colonial Group Home Commission Revision to Joint Use of Powers. John Carnifax.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tonight, you have a resolution and a memo before you, but before we begin, we operate the group home, the Colonial Group Home Commission regionally with the City of Williamsburg, York County, and Gloucester. And the other three localities received this same presentation earlier. Mr. Chris McDonald is your citizen rep. He's going to walk you through this presentation. And then after he's through, I'll be here. Brian Fuller, who's also here, is an employee of York County. He's the Director of Community Services. They manage this program. So Mr. McDonald is going to walk you through it, and then we'll all three be here to take any questions you have.
Thank you so much. Good evening.
Good evening. How y'all doing this evening?
Great. How are you?
Nice to see you. We were established in, the Colonial Group Home Commission was established in 1985. There are four localities currently, York, James City County, York County, City of Williamsburg, and Gloucester County, with also participation from City of Pecos and Matthews County. We use a regional approach to address these services. Services offered are Crossroads Community Youth Home, Community Supervision, PSAS, which is Psychological and Substantial Abuse Services, and Project Insight. Our vision and mission statement, our mission is to serve our participating localities by offering behavioral and rehabilitative services to adjust youth using community-based and integrated approach. Our vision is to give the youth of the community a chance at a living, healthy, and productive life. The purpose is.
Came back from a search.
Okay, Google picked up there.
Siri.
Anyways, back to it. Our purpose is to reduce the youth from being incarcerated and instead provide a stable, structured environment where they can overcome challenges, reduce recidivism, and become productive adult citizens. In fiscal year 2018, our recidivism and outcome, Crossroads Community Youth Home, 84% of all dispositional youth released from the program were successfully released and returned home. Project Insight, Community Service Work, 93% successfully completed the program. Project Insight, Law and Education, Law-related education, 98% successfully completed the Project Insight, 100% of Law-related education, too, completed the program. Intensive Supervision, 69% of all youth remained delinquent-free while in the program. Electronic Monitoring, 79% of all youth remained delinquent-free during the program. Psychological Services, 91% of youth that completed the program remained drug-free for the full duration of the group program. 81% of all youth participating in the aftercare drug screening program remained substance-free throughout the year. As you can see, we've been fairly successful in our mission. This is the, our fiscal 2018 revenue sources. As you can see, our local revenues from our participating localities make up the majority. Then we have smaller pie slice for state revenue at 17%. And then other revenue, which consists of grants and other funding donations, for 5%. Value of a Community Youth Home, this, this is very important to us rather than incarceration because of the fact of by creating an environment which is meant to mimic home with a little bit more boundaries established, rather than putting them as a number in an incarcerated facility would be more detrimental than having them where someone, they have more staff that are dedicated to them, they get warm meals, they get somebody to talk to, they can remain in contact with their family on a regular basis, they can go to school, they can still participate in the community, unlike when they're incarcerated. That can cause, knowing the numbers at this point, going into incarceration can increase recidivism by who they may hang out with because the offenders that are allowed in the group home versus the offenders that are allowed into the Merrimack Facility are at a higher level than what we would allow in our group home. Cost to benefit, this analysis shows that if a locale was to place a youth into the Merrimack Detention Facility for 365 days, it would cost the locality $61,393. 365 days in the group home would cost $47,450. So using this as an alternative would definitely save money in the long run for the locales. The bottom line, this is a cost-effective alternative to incarceration, investing in our youth from the, from the outset procedures and stronger and safer community in which all of its members belong. And at the end of the day, any, an investment in our youth is an investment in our community. And that's not just for James City County. It's for youth coming in from York County, City of Williamsburg, into James City County, and going back and forth. It creates an overall community of people working together to put them back, okay, you got a little off track, let's get you straight, let's get you back into the community, and let's get you back productive and on track. Now, we've also taken the opportunity to do foundation, founding documents, which have not been touched since 1985. So the original agreement has not been updated since then. Minor updates to the language, name changes, code references, funding formulas, revisions based upon discussions with each member, locality and desire of transition, and uses based upon versus general population-based formula. The line, what is highlighted in red is where we have made our changes. Correct, John? And we have, you sent copies out to the entire county. Anybody that would like to discuss, discuss any of these, please contact anybody on the commission. John, let you take, there's one more page that I'll let you take care of with on the revenues.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, John. If you remember, about two years ago, we started discussions with all three county administrators and the city manager about going from a population-based formula where we would pay based on our population. And like you said, it started in 1985. And now all of our other Merrimack Center and other facilities, you pay based on utilization. So that's the key change in these bylaws is just that. Which for James City County, because we were the fastest growing since 1985, we paid a larger share based on our population, even though at times our utilization was low. So we're really bringing this organization into the same funding formula that we have with the others. We started two years ago transitioning. So part of the formula now is based on population and part of it is on utilization. Three more years, correct, Brian? In three years, it'll be 100% utilization with a five-year lookback. So you take the five-year average of the previous five years, and that's how each locality will pay. And that's the largest change that we've made in this. The others are just technical wording. So if there's any questions you all have with me or anybody, be glad to answer.
Well, I'm going to make a comment. I think this is very important, especially to keep youth out of the prison system because it's just a downward spiral from there on. And if we can catch them and help them prior to them getting too involved in that, it's a win-win for the whole community. Because, you know, none of us want to see as, as children grow up and follow different paths. And, you know, the parents are home doing what they need, doing everything else, and get a certain influence, and next thing you know, they're going sideways. And if this can stop them in that process and turn them back around and still be connected to their family, I don't see why this wouldn't be a win-win situation for everybody. And it would help us in the police force, it would help us in the jail, it would help us in the court systems, it would help us all the way around, it would help us in our community from anybody getting hurt and somebody, you know, gaining that ability to get a little more aggressive when you could love them a little bit more and turn them around. So I'm very impressed with it, and I think it's a great project and done a great job for the years y'all been. Thank you. Thank you all.
Well said.
I would concur, and I just thank you for your dedication to these young people and what you're doing. Thank you very much.
I wanted to bring out that they had their 10-year celebration just recently, and I was privileged to attend that, where they did ribbon cutting. I was, I believe it was 10 years ago when I was on the board that we cut the ribbon the first time and opened the facility. But what was most moving about the ceremony was the young lady, Rachel Hoare, who came out and spoke to us about her life and how she had been turned around. And she was, she was very impressive. She had been fighting a drug addiction and had real problems, and it was inspirational to see how she had turned a corner. And she was very much of an advocate for this, this facility and our community. And I think that spoke volumes for it.
Thank you very much for coming, and thank you for your hard work. It's so very, very important, especially in this day and age. With that, I would ask for a motion to, for the approval of the attached resolution, resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute the revised Joint Exercise of Powers agreement for the Colonial Group Home Commission.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Stevens?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Before we go to board request and directives, I would ask that, we recently conducted the annual review of the county attorney. Based on the positive outcome of that review, I would like to entertain a motion to grant the county attorney a 2% increase in salary retroactively effective to July 1st, 2018, to be paid for out-of-contingency funds.
Motion.
Thank you so much. Mr. Stevens?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, board request and directives.
I'll just focus on one, one item this evening. That is, several of us want to.
I'll just focus on one, one item this evening, that is, several of us went up to the Virginia Association of Counties' annual meeting at the homestead the last couple of days, and I just wanted to highlight the fact that at four o'clock yesterday afternoon, the Coalition of High Growth Communities met and had a great turnout from a lot of localities across the state who, like us, are always trying to struggle with the question of how to deal with the rates of growth that we encounter, how to fairly apportion the cost of that growth. And I'd say that we had a very spirited, good discussion and a recognition that it's important for us all to work together, and so I was very pleased with the outcome of that meeting.
In addition to the Colonial Group Home celebration that I attended, one of the things that I was most impressed with this time is we've made progress. We have a contract signed to remove the cobblestones in Newtown, and we had a little bit of a photo op where we went out there to celebrate that, and people from the community showed up to appreciate it. I believe work is supposed to start here in the next week or so, and it'll take about five to seven days to get that done.
I think we could all show up with a sledgehammer or two and take our frustration out.
If you want, if you want a paperweight, I think you can get a couple of good paperweights there. We, a lot of us participated in that opening of our tour and Publix, and the opening, I was there at seven o'clock in the morning when they cut the ribbon and had it stormed. But we were very happy to have Publix open back in our, in our community. And then one other thing that I would mention was I was privileged enough to attend the Volunteer Firefighters banquet, and it's, it's a very impressive group, and I really enjoyed being with them that evening.
Well, I attended the VACO conference as well. It was, I learned a tremendous amount, and I look forward to seeing some of the things that we discussed hopefully on the legislative agenda in Richmond soon, because I think there were a lot of concerns all across the Commonwealth that we've all been experiencing. I won't say anymore, Mr. Kinsman, about that. And Mr. First, do we have any sort of update? Maybe you could check into it for me. I saw Mr. Fowler here with Rochambeau. I know he's had issues with VDOT out there, so anything we could check on about that. And I attended the Volunteer Firemen's banquet as well. Thank you for being there. It was a pleasure having you. I was privileged to be able to swear in our new volunteer firemen and EMT folks, and a wonderful time was had by all. So we can't thank all of our first responders for every, we just can't thank everybody enough for everything that they do for the community. So I'm sure I've attended a million other things, but I'm tired.
All right, mine's gonna be short and sweet. Of course, always working on transportation, so we'll be meeting again this week on Thursday, and we'll continue to push transportation for James City County and through James City County so that we can save as much as possible and keep our money in our pockets. Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would just also follow up about VACO and say that I thought it was a, it was a very good conference, lots of good things discussed, and I do have to give, there were several members of the General Assembly that, that did attend, and, and that is not easy because they, they heard a lot about unfunded mandates, and please stop doing unfunded mandates. But there were, there were some sessions that I attended that, that I thought there was a good back and forth, so I appreciated them going, appreciated my colleagues attending as well. And Mr. Stevens, thank you for going. Just a couple of things. One, I want to draw people's attention to the Jamestown, the new exhibit which James City County helped support, which is Tenacity, and it is about the women of Jamestown and that have been forgotten, really. And it is, it is an incredible exhibit. I, I hope that they're, they're very proud over there because they should be. And there are a couple of documents, one being the Virginia muster and the other being the census, that once they leave this exhibit, one will have to go into darkness, so to speak, for ten years, and another for twenty-seven years because of the fact that they've been brought out and they've been on display. And so to protect them, they have to go back in. And so it is to see the names and that type of thing of who was here then. I would urge you to go and to learn more about the women who contributed a lot but unfortunately haven't been talked about a whole lot, so Tenacity is the name of that. I had another question, and I was gonna wait until Mr. Carroll was here, but I thought I would go to staff. I, in my district, I have an intersection that has been the, it's, it causes a great deal of stress. It is the intersection of Route Five and Greensprings Road and Centerville also. And I have met with Mr. Carroll a couple, I know he's probably sick to death of talking to me about it, but it is not, it is something that I am approached about almost daily from citizens that, that live in my area, and, and not just, not just Berkeley people, but anyone that uses that area. And I've also been approached about a citizens' working group to talk about possible solutions for that intersection, and I didn't know if that was anything that had ever been done here in the county, or just to talk about ideas moving forward, what they might look, look like, what are some things we could do. You know, I, I know from talking to Mr. Carroll that, you know, one thing that, that we have is that there's very little shoulder there, there's very little ways to increase because that road really wasn't meant for the type of traffic that it gets every day. It was a country road that was traveled, so when VDOT purchased it, it didn't purchase a whole lot of shoulder land, and that's probably not the right, shoulder land is probably not the right verb.
Sounds like a TV show.
But, yes, right of way. Thank you. I knew you would know. So, but I just wondered if I could, if staff could, could think about that and, and give me some thoughts on it, and because I want people to know that I hear them, you know, there was just an accident last week coming up to Centerville, and I know that there's statistics, and those statistics aren't necessarily driven by fender benders, but it's, there's a lot of fender benders out there, and, and it's near a high school, it's a lot of inexperienced drivers, it's, so, anyway.
Let us talk about that, and we'll follow up with it.
Okay.
But I'm sure we're, we're happy to talk to residents and listen to their concerns and ideas.
Well, you better be ready then.
We're happy to do it.
I'm just saying.
Just saying.
No, no, no. No, and I haven't had anybody ask me for that. I mean, I think if there's genuine, there's genuine concern and, you know, that, as we continue to grow, what, how are we gonna handle that there? And so, and with that, I will turn to the report of the county administrator.
Madam Chair, just a couple items to share this evening. One, Thanksgiving is coming in a week or so, so just to let the citizens know what facilities will be open, some of James County officers' facilities and service will close in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. The courthouse will close at noon, and the libraries will close at 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday, November twenty-first. The government center, courts, and libraries will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-second, and Friday, November twenty-third. And then we do have a full list of closings on our website available, or they could call our office, we're happy to talk through that. I do want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. That is a time of year that's good and bad for many, and so, you know, look after your neighbors and friends that might have lost somebody this past year. Curbside leaf collection, James City County will provide one round of curbside leaf collection. The schedule has changed since last year. You can find information online or by calling General Services at seven-five-seven-two-five-nine forty-eighty. Again, seven-five-seven-two-five-nine forty-eighty. The collection dates will be between December third and December nineteenth, and again, more information's available online. As a reminder, leaves must be in a clear bag, no larger than lawn or leaf size, forty gallons or less, and then bagged leaves must be less curbside on the day that we've been collecting in their, each area. So I would encourage residents to get informed of when we're coming to their area and have their leaves in bags if they want us to pick them up for them. So that's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you. Before I turn it over to Ms. Sadler, Ms. Dolman, I wondered if I could put you on the spot. Could you talk a little bit, have you, podcast, have you done one lately, or what's the latest one that would be up?
I believe the latest one that has been up has been part of our Workforce Housing Task Force series. We did six or seven podcasts that focus on an aspect, whether it be economic development, education, all of the different things that are involved in workforce housing. We have also started up again our monthly podcast with the county administrator. Scott Stevens had his first one the end of the month, and I think it went very well. We also had Diana Mormon come and speak the week before the election, just letting people know about updated, about the polling places and what they need to bring to the polls and whatnot.
Okay. I, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I just think it's such a great way for people to get information. So before you get off the spotlight, maybe you could just say a little bit about where, where can people go that may not be aware of these podcasts to listen to them?
Probably the easiest way to find our podcast is to go to the county's website, which is jamescitycountyva.gov, and if you scroll all the way down to the bottom of the homepage, there's a widget there that has every podcast episode that we have done.
Okay, thank you. You've done a great job, and I really appreciate it.
And I owe you a phone call to set mine up.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
With that, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to the JCSA.
Good, thank you. I call to order this regular meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors. Good evening, Mr. Fowler.
Good evening.
Please call the roll.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here. Public comlet, do we have any speaker cards this evening from anyone? No, we're good. Consent calendar, which includes our minutes adoption. Do we have?
The adoption and consent calendar.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, good. Public hearings, we do have a few this evening.
We have one public hearing. It is a transfer of, or a easement abandonment, I'm sorry. The owner and developer of Walnut Farms has requested that the James City Service Authority abandon an easement that's basically running right through the middle of their property at the moment. They want, they want us to abandon that easement. The portion of the easement is no longer necessary for the force main because they're installing a gravity sewer system as part of the development there, and that force main will be relocated. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Any questions for anybody? All right, so we will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers? None? Then we will close our public hearing and look to the board for a motion or discussion.
Motion. For approval.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
I think that's it for our public hearings. Next, we're at board considerations.
Proposed transfer of facilities to the Hampton Road Sanitation District. HRSD has recently assumed responsibility for wastewater treatment services in Surrey County. Instead of replacing the existing deficient infrastructure in Surrey County, they are proposing to pump the wastewater from Surrey to their Williamsburg Treatment Plant. In order to do so, they need to install new force main piping underneath the James River and come up to basically our park there at Jamestown Road, and then get, extend that force main to Lift Station one-one, which is shown in the red square on your map there. HRSD would then desire to pump that flow through the existing force main, which is the yellow line there from Lift Station one-one to Route one-ninety-nine. As part of this proposal, J, HRSD proposes to assume ownership of James City Service Authority's force main and lift station, and then they would be responsible for the maintenance of those facilities and any improvements that would be needed to accommodate future development in the area. Included in your packet is a breakdown of, of maintenance costs, lifecycle costs, in addition to the proposed agreement. If the board does approve this agreement, there are a couple of steps that would be required after this. HRSD would need a special use permit, and they would also need to come back to the Board of Directors for a public hearing to actually convey the property. Staff believes this proposal's in the best interest of the Service Authority, relieves us of a liability while also ensures that the future growth can be accommodated. Staff recommends approval. Mr. Hennifin, General Manager of HRSD, is in attendance tonight. Between the two of us, we'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
The only question I have is, is this Lift Station one-dash-one is currently serving, collecting from that surrounding area?
That's correct, yes.
And, and so bringing across from the Surrey, across the river, and connecting into that, is, does this have capacity to handle all that, or would this require some, ultimately some improvements to, to this, to, to be able to handle that extra load?
It currently has capacity.
Okay.
This agreement does require, however, if we get to the point where it does not have the capacity, that HRSD would be responsible for making the improvements to accommodate the additional capacity. But it currently has the capacity.
Thank you.
I have a question. The, the lift station, will there be any other lift stations needed after it comes across the river, or comes under the river, that will affect Jamestown event area and the Jamestown Festival Park and all, everything down there?
At this time, we don't anticipate that any additional lift stations would be necessary.
So if they, if they had to put one in, they have to come to, before us for an S U P?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and they've, they've calculated that, I guess that's gonna be gravity-fed in that area?
Uh, I believe it's gonna be a force main that's gonna be required to get from the river to Lift Station one-one. Is that correct?
It could be pressurized from the other side and get all the way to Lift Station one-one.
Okay, so there's, there's enough, you'll sit on the Surrey side. I'll wait till you get up. That's all right. Don't worry.
Yes.
There'll be enough to force it over that we're not gonna have to have another lift station to, to move it any further, because that's a protected area down there, and the last thing we wanna do is put another, you know, building in there that's, you know, we need, we would need, but hopefully we won't, and we won't have to have one down there.
So that, that's really why we approached the Service Authority with this concept, that we didn't want to have to build anything else in that corridor if we didn't have to, and this is really a great solution for both of us, we think.
And then we'll still have the ability to tie into that. If we, anything adds in the future, we can, just like we will with the Service Authority, be able to tie into your main and, and pump that way as well.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, that's all questions.
Anyone else? We're good? All right, but then I will look for a motion.
Move the resolution. Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Next is contract award, engineering services for College Creek Water Main Crossing, ninety-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars.
As you are aware from recent events, there is a sixteen-inch water main suspended along the westbound portion of Route one, Route one-ninety-nine, the College Creek Bridge, and that area serves all of our customers east of College Creek. It is scheduled for rehabilitation. There is an underwater main under College Creek which has failed, failed years ago, and has been deemed not repairable. In order for us to make the repairs to the bridge, or to the pipe suspended, to the bridge, we need to put in a redundant line. So this contract is for engineering services to design that redundant line, which would be under the College Creek, College Creek Bridge. RFP was solicited for engineering services. We had eight firms submit proposals, and a team of staff selected the firm of Rommel, Klepper, and Call, also known as RKNK, as the most qualified firm. Contract price of ninety-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars was negotiated. That's actually below the threshold that would be required for board approval, but just by a couple thousand dollars. So just in order to be proactive, we thought we'd bring the contract before you for your approval. That way, if there are any change orders at a later date, we can go ahead and move forward and not, and not be delayed in having to bring that back to the board. Staff recommends approval of the resolution, and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Appreciate that thought. Go ahead.
When the project's complete, and we'll have two lines, or they'll take the other one down, or we'll leave two?
We're gonna leave two.
Good.
Yes.
And then that way, we'll gate them, so if we had a problem in one, we could shift over to the other and fix?
Exactly, exactly. What's driving this now is that we need that redundancy, but we really, to, to make the repairs.
Right.
But we really need to have the redundancy in place anyway. So one of the options we looked at was doing something on a temporary basis, but we decided the best course of action was to have a permanent redundant line in place.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Move approval.
Mr. Fowler?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Next, I'm looking for a motion, please, to go into closed session for discussion or consideration of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made, public init, I'm sorry, I'm getting tired. Initially, the financial interest of the government unit would be adversely affected regarding a project development agreement with the City of Newport News pursuant to section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-six of the Code of Virginia.
Motion?
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Hippel?
Aye.
Aye. We are in closed session.
Do you wanna take us into closed session?
No, I, I will, we will, I will bring us, we will come back out, and then we will go back in for our closed session.
Okay.